Hello Salem, my name is Kyle Davis and I am running to be one of your next city councilors at large. I felt compelled to run because I believe that we need different types of people, perspectives, and lived experiences at every level of government, including local. As a renter on Canal Street, I would be the only renter on the council if elected. I'm a gay man that grew up in an amazing blended and ethnically diverse family with two moms. As a waiter, I've experienced wage theft and understand personally the struggle for workers' rights. I'm a survivor of domestic abuse. I've always channeled the challenges that I've faced outwards onto helping people through my activism, advocacy, and volunteer work. And I would be honored to continue that work within the city council and bring my lived experiences to the important conversations that we have within that body and fight to create a more equal and thriving Salem for everyone, including our most marginalized communities. The council is there to be a point of contact whenever a resident needs them, to be a voice for them, and work to pass policies that are in the best interest of the community. I've made it clear throughout my campaign and on my campaign literature that lists my personal phone number that I'm committed to being the most responsive and accessible counselor. I also believe that the city council needs to mentally expand upon its role and lean into its transformative potential on so many issues. Too often I've heard councilors say that some of our biggest challenges are really more of a state issue or federal issue. When in truth, we could change the lives of many cost burdened and unhoused people through common sense policies that the council has unfortunately voted down in the past. We can't solve the climate crisis in Salem, but we can be a leader in our transition to renewable energy and becoming a less car dependent city. There is a lot more that we could and should be doing. On the issue of housing, as I said, I would be the only renter on the council if elected. And I'm excited to be that voice for the 50% of this city that currently has zero representation. If you work in Salem, you should be able to afford to live in Salem. We need affordable options on every income level, which is why I support a tiered inclusionary zoning ordinance. We need to reexamine our restrictive zoning and make multifamily housing possible to build citywide. I support the condo conversion ordinance, adding single room occupancy to our zoning. And we need to talk about a reasonable rent stabilization policy to prevent eviction by price gouging. Right now, there is nothing stopping a landlord from raising rents 200%. We also need to join the 17 cities nationwide that have enacted a right to counsel for tenants to end the asymmetry of representation within the courtroom. I could go on, but the bottom line is that I'm ready to be a voice for renters and working class people and families because housing is a human right. On the issue of the climate crisis, this is the crisis of our lifetime. And as an environmental justice community, we are at the heart of that crisis. That means that we have a responsibility not just to move quickly towards renewable energy and decarbonizing our buildings and infrastructure, but to also prepare in a comprehensive way for the weather events that will become more extreme and frequent over time. Through continuing to work with our dedicated partners like SAFE, CIRC, and the Salem Sound Coastal Watch, we can treat climate resilience with the urgency that it deserves to protect every vulnerable community along the waterfront. We have the opportunity to be a city that leads the way in becoming a less car dependent city and become a safe place for pedestrians citywide and offer a large and attractive range of public transportation methods. We must take full advantage of the green community grant funds and oppose all new fossil fuel infrastructure. I am committed to listening to scientists and making sure that this is a place that my generation is safe to grow old in and future generations are safe to grow up in. Providing those alternative public transportation methods will also make our streets safer and help us to manage our traffic and parking issues. The Salem Skipper has been amazing and we will see it continue to help us manage things better as it expands to other communities. We've got to finally get that South MBTA station. I'd be in favor of shuttle buses, bringing folks to some of our most popular destinations. Anything we can do to encourage better alternatives because traffic and parking is really the pain that we feel as residents, especially during October, but also year round. I'm ready to be a voice for our community when it comes to the offshore wind terminal project and make sure that Salem's working class is lifted up through good paying jobs. I will make sure that the development at Shetland Park helps bring affordability and economic growth rather than gentrification. I want to pay our educators better and tackle teacher retention and improve equity and mental health in our classrooms as well as educational outcomes. I'm driven to fight on all these important issues because I love Salem and I believe that loving your community means fighting for it. We're a community that stands with the LGBT plus community, stands for racial justice, stands with immigrants regardless of their documentation status. We reject antisemitism, sexism, and all other forms of bigotry. We are pretty amazing and through not being afraid of bold progress and a willingness to tackle big challenges with courage and compassion, we can continue to be amazing. I'm humbly asking for one of your four votes on November 7th. To learn more, you can go to kyleforsalem.com or check out any of my social media pages at KyleForSalem. Thank you so much.
Hi, I want to start by thanking Salem ASATV for this great opportunity that allowed me to address you. And I also want to thank you, the voters of Salem, for the trust that you had put on me for the last six years to be one of your city councilor at large. In case you don't know who I am, my name is Domingo Dominguez, City Councilor at Large of the great city of Salem. And I'm very proud to say that I am the first Latino to be elected as a city councilor at large in this great city of Salem. I want you to know that my journey from the Dominican Republic to America has been a wonderful experience, coming to a land of freedom and tremendous opportunities. I can never realize, I can never imagine, that regardless where you come from, who you are, if you work hard with dedication, follow the laws and the rules of the United States, you can make endless opportunities for you and your family. With the help of my family and friends, I was able to seize and be able to be elected for six term to the great city of Salem representing you. And it would be my honor to continue to do so if you elect me in the next election, November 7. I also want you to know that if you elect me, I promise to continue to work hard with strong devotion to represent you fairly and to make sure that our voices are counted. I would be so honored to continue to serve you and represent you, the people of Salem. If elected again, my promise to you is that I will continue to work with strong devotion and solid purpose to continue to do my best to find common ground on the issues at hand and to our seniors, citizens, veterans. And I also wanted to reassure you that I will continue to be there for you all. I will never forget when I arrived to Salem 30 years ago. I came here to be a teacher at Salem Public School. And I eventually opened my own business. I raised my family here. I bought my house. And I want you to know that I fell in love with Salem since day one. I fell in love of the Salem history, the diversity, and the strong sense of community that we have in Salem. Salem has welcomed me and my family. Salem helped me educate my family and raise my family here and gave me so many opportunities. Now, I had the opportunity to give back to Salem. My time as a bilingual teacher, business owner, parent, and now as a city councilor at large, it gave me the experience to allow to deal with so many people and to hear from them. But most importantly, to be collaborative with everyone. I want also you to know that I had contributed a lot to the city of Salem that I love and I wanted to continue to do so if you allow me to. I also, throughout the year that I have here in Salem, I had learned how beautiful and unique our city is and that the sense of family is incredibly strong. As one of your city councilor at large, I will continue to work for you, to hear you, to fight for you, and together, I will continue to address the issue that matter you the most. I am ready to continue to fight for the working and middle class families on Salem. And I will diligently continue to work and speak out on the current issues of our local governments. Those issues are, among others, transportation, parking, healthcare, environment, safety, issue, and education. As it is in my custom, I intend to continue to work hard and make an effort to speak with each and every one of the voters of the city of Salem, not only during campaign season, but throughout the whole year. My purpose is to continue to work for you and the issue that matter you the most. On November 7, please do me the honor to continue to serve you and represent you. Consider me one of your four vote, Domingo Dominguez, for reelection, and I will fairly represent everybody. Thank you for listening. May God continue to bless America and Salem. Now, let's continue to fight for our city. Please vote. Please allow me at this moment to address the Spanish speaker community throughout this speech. Gracias a Salem ASATV por la oportunidad que me cede, de poder dirigirme a ustedes. Quiero también darle las gracias a todos los votantes de la ciudad de Salem por la confianza, el apoyo, y el soporte que me han dado durante los últimos seis años como uno de sus concejales generales. En caso de que algunos no sepan quién soy, yo soy Domingo Dominguez, concejal general de la ciudad de Salem, y muy orgullosamente le dejo saber que soy el primer Latino en ser electo a esa posición por la ciudad completa. Quiero que sepan que mi trayectoria desde la República Dominicana hasta América me han dado maravillosas experiencias. Llegar aquí al país de las oportunidades de la libertad me ha sido de mucha alegría. Nunca imaginé que sin importar de dónde tú venga, quién eres, si trabajas duro, sigues las reglas y las leyes de este país, las oportunidades son innumerables. Con la ayuda de mi familia y de algunos amigos, puedes realizar mis sueños en los Estados Unidos y recientemente ser electo a la posición de gobierno como concejal general. Ahora estoy aquí enfrente de ustedes pidiéndole una vez más su apoyo y su soporte para lograr la reelección a concejal general por cuarta vez. Hay mucho trabajo todavía que hacer. Será un honor para mí continuar representando a la ciudad de Salem y a su gente. Si soy electo una vez más, prometo seguir trabajando fuerte para buscar momentos generales en donde todos podamos trabajar en armonía. Además, me gustaría continuar trabajando en favor de los envejecientes, los ciudadanos de Salem, las comunidades de diferentes diversidades, continuar trabajando en la educación, en la seguridad pública, en el medio ambiente, transportación, parqueo, y demás situaciones que afectan a los residentes de Salem. Yo nunca voy a olvidar cuando llegué aquí a la ciudad de Salem hace aproximadamente 30 años. Llegué aquí como maestro de la escuela pública de Salem y eventualmente abrí mi propio negocio aquí en la ciudad de Salem. Inmediatamente llegué aquí, me enamoré del espíritu de comunidad que tenía Salem, la historia, la diversidad. Salem me ha dado la bienvenida a mí y a mi familia, me ha enseñado mucho, me ha ayudado a crear mi familia acá. Es momento de que yo continúe dándole a Salem poco. Pero más que todo, ese sentido de comunidad que Salem embarga es lo que hace a Salem único. De manera clara quiero decirle que si tengo la oportunidad de ser reelected una vez más por ustedes, seguiré trabajando en conjunto con mis colegas en el gobierno municipal para avanzar agendas y temas que vengan a traer soluciones a la problemática que tenemos aquí en Salem. Como uno de sus concejales generales, yo continuare trabajando por ustedes. Yo seguiré oyéndolos a ustedes y yo seguiré peleando por ustedes. Juntos vamos a continuar enfocándonos en conseguir las soluciones a los temas que nos afectan. Yo estoy listo para continuar la pelea, el trabajo, y lo que es todo lo posible para que nuestras familias de bajos recursos, de moderados recursos, y todos en sentido general podamos tener continuar con calidad de vida en esta ciudad. Esos temas que nos afectan, entre otros que voy a nombrar, son los que nos estaremos enfocando en un cuarto periodo. Esos problemas serían educación, viviendas asequibles, transportación, parqueo, la salud, el medio ambiente, y otros temas. Como es mi costumbre, yo continuare trabajando para hacer un esfuerzo único en hablar con cada uno de los residentes de Salem, así oír sus inquietudes y los temas que les afectan para juntos trabajar en la solución a esos temas. Yo estaré visitando la ciudad de Salem no solamente durante la campaña, sino durante todo el año, como es mi costumbre. Mi propósito es de continuar trabajando por ustedes y tratar de enfocar las soluciones a esos temas. En noviembre 7, le pido que me den el honor de continuar representando a cada uno de ustedes y que me den la oportunidad de ser su concejal general una vez más. Espero que juntos, este 7 de noviembre, salgamos a votar para que nuestras voces sean unidas de manera que elijamos a los líderes que estarán los próximos dos años representando en el gobierno municipal. Por favor, den uno de su voto para yo poder continuar siendo la voz del pueblo. Muchas gracias por escuchar, le doy la gracia infinita por su apoyo y espero que este 7 de noviembre todos salgan a votar masivamente. Que Dios bendiga América, que Dios bendiga a la ciudad de Salem, y que Dios continúe dándonos la salida para nosotros poder seguir caminando. Ahora vamos a continuar peleando y trabajando por nuestra ciudad. Por favor, voten este 7 de noviembre. Muchas gracias.
Hi, I'm Ty Happworth. I'm a father, a husband, an army veteran, a Microsoft commercial executive, and for the last four years, it has been my absolute honor to represent you. As your councilor-at-large and as a committee chair, I have fought for affordable housing, safe walkable streets, historic preservation, and thoughtful growth. I've also led robust committee discussions around Salem's haunted happenings, pedestrian safety, and city services in our most disadvantaged neighborhoods. I'm proud of the work that I've accomplished with my colleagues, but I know that I have so much more work to do and I'd be honored to earn your vote again this fall. Service is important to me. When I was in the Army, I served with the first sergeant who said to me, "Sir, any idiot can point out a problem. Leaders make themselves part of the solution." That stuck with me and it's been a guiding principle for me. I see the problems, I see the challenges Salem faces. And I'm committed to tackling those challenges because I love this city and I feel lucky to call Salem home. When I think about why I love Salem, I often think of specific moments in time when I just feel lucky to live here. One of those moments happened to me this past June as we were painting the crosswalks for Pride. For those who don't know, every summer, members of our LGBTQ+ community and allies come together to paint our crosswalks to show the world what we stand for. For the last four years, I've been honored to organize supplies for these incredible events. This year, we decided to paint a crosswalk pink and blue to show support for our trans friends, family, and neighbors. That night, we gathered at City Hall, celebrated together, and then headed out to our assigned crosswalks to start painting. Around 11:00 PM, I got a call from one of the volunteers at the Trans Pride Crosswalk telling me that we had run out of pink. So I got in my car and drove down to Washington Street and started mixing some red and white together to make our own pink. About halfway through the mixing process, I remembered that I'm colorblind and I couldn't be confident in the shade of pink that I was creating. At that moment, Councilor Proznuski, my at-large colleague and former police captain, leaned in with his flashlight and helped me determine if we had the right shade of pink. At that moment in time, I just remember thinking, "Here I am, it's almost midnight on a Tuesday. I'm standing in the middle of the street with a retired cop, trying to figure out if we have the right shade of pink." And at that moment in time, I just remember thinking how lucky I was to call Salem home. And I think so many of us feel lucky to live here. When I go door to door, I don't see the extreme opinions that are sometimes exhibited on social media. I met tens of thousands of neighbors who love this city but know that we can do better. They want to see action on affordable housing. That's why we passed accessory dwelling units to allow homeowners to create naturally occurring affordable housing in their own homes. We created a housing roadmap to help guide future development initiatives. We've given residents free access to advice from housing lawyers so that they know their rights and hired a housing stability coordinator to work with residents to help them keep a roof over their head. That's why we're also working to pass the condo conversion ordinance to slow down the pace of rental units being converted to condos and give additional rights to renters. Inclusionary zoning to make sure that developers are building a greater share of units as deed restricted affordable housing. And that's why I brought forward in order to study the legalization of single room occupancy to give more options to residents, particularly residents who have the most need. They want to see their neighborhoods retain their historic integrity. That's why I supported and helped create the Bridge Street Neck overlay to encourage the historic mixed-use, family-friendly development that already exists in that neighborhood. The demolition delay ordinance, which is one of the strongest in the state, to help make it much harder for out-of-town developers to come into Salem, tear down a historic building, and build something bigger and out of character in its place. I hear so much support at the doors for our local parks. That's why in 2020, we bonded for $16 million to support our signature parks at a time when our interest rates were low and our bond rating was high, a decision that we will thank ourselves for for a generation. And now more than ever, I'm hearing residents who want action on climate change. That's why we passed the municipal green building ordinance to ensure that our own city buildings are meeting standards, the Styrofoam ban, the urban agriculture ordinance, the wetlands protection ordinance. And that's why I'm honored to support offshore wind. And my hope is that Salem will be a key player in this space for years to come. This is also why I'm working with residents in the Willows in their bid to get the new seawall built, get the city to invest in emergency response vehicles, and get the city to study evacuation plans, which we are doing. It's also why we've supported the planting of thousands of trees to absorb rainwater and provide much needed shade in all of our neighborhoods. And I will always support and advocate for permeable paving and recyclable sidewalk materials, including and especially brick. Finally, what I hear from residents is they want leaders who are accessible and accountable. Character matters to me and I am guided by my values. And those values are bravery, I believe in following my moral compass, doing what is right despite personal or professional consequences. I believe in having the courage to admit that I can learn from others. Empathy, I treat others with respect and seek to understand their perspective and point of view regardless of my own opinion. I love a good political debate, but I'll always give others the benefit of the doubt. And authenticity, I say what I mean and I ask for what I think is right. As a mentor to young leaders, I have always encouraged them to be honest and transparent in their interactions. Thank you so much Salem. Thank you for electing me in 2019, reelecting me again in 2021, and I hope to earn your vote again this November 7th. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alice Merkel and I have the honor of being your city councilor at large here in Salem. I wanted to thank SATV for the opportunity to create a candidate profile to assist our voters. To tell you a little bit about myself, I am a piano teacher by trade and I made Salem my home with my husband in 2011. I have either worked for small family-owned businesses or have been running my own small business for the last 20 years here in Massachusetts. And I am passionate about serving my community through my extensive volunteer work here over the years with the Salem Food Pantry, the Mack Park Food Farm, community life center events for older adults, the Women's Friends Society, the Salem Education Foundation, and neighborhood cleanups. I also regularly participate in events supporting HAWK, Mental Makeover, Historic Salem Inc., and other organizations that serve our community. Being on the city council has really complemented and enhanced the work I do for our residents and I'm proud of the work I've done with my council colleagues. I've been responsive to my constituents that reach out with questions for assistance with all kinds of issues, including sidewalks, flooding, senior tax work off program, October concerns, council business, and I have worked hard to assist them. And it's been really enjoyable to work with our city staff and departments. I will continue to work with city leadership to provide DPS with the resources it needs to address our sidewalks that need attention. I am also proactive in serving our residents in being the only counselor at large that does a newsletter with available services, events, and all things Salem. And here in Salem, we are not an island and we don't get to stand still. We are not immune from what goes on at the state and national level. When Roe v. Wade was overturned, I was proud of the resolution and the ordinance our council passed protecting people seeking gender-affirming and reproductive healthcare and their providers. And with the increase in harmful legislation and hostility towards the LGBTQ+ community, we passed a resolution in the city council clearly stating our support for our LGBTQ+ community members. Whether it's crosswalk painting, flag raising, events, support for Nagley, we stand in solidarity. And we are certainly not immune from the affordable housing crisis, which has been devastating here in Salem. I speak with and assist people on a regular basis that are currently unhoused or facing displacement and it is heartbreaking. I will continue working on initiatives, some which have passed and need to be implemented, to address this. With about 50% of our residents being renters and about 80% of residents living in the Point neighborhood being renters, we need the condo conversion ordinance put in place, which will further protect renters facing displacement. We need to continue to support the efforts of organizations such as the North Shore CDC in creating truly affordable housing. We also need the inclusionary zoning ordinance for development to include a larger percentage of affordable units, the tax increment financing agreement when applicable, and other initiatives. Recently, the North Shore CDC created 46 affordable apartments and they received over 3,000 applications for them. Having been a low-income, single mother facing housing insecurity years ago, the stress and fear is undescribable. And we also need to support the efforts of the city to protect renters. The city has hired a neighborhood stability coordinator to assist all Salem residents regardless of income with housing instability issues. And as city leadership, we need to support this role and also the city of Salem's Housing Stability Drop-In Service, which provides free housing information to Salem residents. And we cannot address homelessness without homes and supportive services. I support and respect the efforts of our Salem Police I support and respect the efforts of our Salem Police Department Community Impact Unit working with LifeBridge to assist people who are unhoused. I support their approach in recognizing that everyone has their own lived experiences and challenges, and there is no one-size-fits-all solution. I've closely observed their efforts to build trust and offer options for assistance. We need to work hard so there are housing options and assistance to offer. And we are certainly not immune to the effects of our climate crisis. As a city, we are already seeing the devastating effects of the climate crisis, particularly with coastal resiliency. I will push for new and existing buildings to maintain the highest green standard possible and was proud to support our Green Building Ordinance for municipal buildings. I will continue to work with my council colleagues and with the Sustainability and Resiliency Department and also the Salem Alliance for the Environment, Salem Sound Coast Watch, and other organizations to continue Salem's commitment to coastal resiliency and to reducing the environmental impact associated with the climate crisis. We need continued support for the efforts of our Resilient Together initiative, which is Salem and Beverly's Climate Action Plan. And there has been more education and focus on the risk of flooding to vulnerable areas in Salem over the past few years, but we need to do so much more, including coordinating with the state to address decaying seawalls and mitigating coastal flooding on a larger scale. I'm grateful for the work that was done in '21 and '22 on the Wetlands Ordinance amendments and look forward to continuing to work on our flood ordinance and the Climate Resiliency Overlay District that promotes adaptable designs that address future flood risk through innovative solutions. And I also support and am excited about the offshore wind industry coming to Salem and voted in favor of their tax increment financing agreement. I am so proud to live in such a diverse and welcoming city with people that are so passionate about their community. I volunteered in 2017 for the Salem's Yes on One campaign supporting a city council ordinance to protect our immigrant community members. I will continue to support the work of our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and our city leaders to evaluate our city policies and services and our organizations and institutions as well to assure that we are treating all our community members equitably and with respect. I had the honor of being on the El Punto Community Mural Project Committee with the North Shore CDC, and please go check it out on Congress Street if you haven't seen this fabulous mural yet, along with all the other spectacular murals in the neighborhood. And I'm also taking Spanish classes offered by the city and learning to utilize online translation options in an effort to make everyone that I engage with feel welcome. And in closing, I really appreciate you watching my video, and please feel free to reach out to me anytime. For more information, please visit my website, electalicemerkel.com. And for a more personal perspective of my lived experiences, please click on my Poverty Trap Up Ed link under news articles on my website. I respectfully ask for your support on November 7th, and I hope to continue having the honor of serving as your city councillor. Thank you very much.
Hello, my fellow Salem neighbors. My name is Filippi Zambellini. I am here to ask you for your vote for Salem City Councillor-at-large. I am a father, husband, public servant, and progressive who is proud to call Salem home. I am running because I believe everyone deserves to live in a safe, affordable, and welcoming community. Salem is at a crossroads today. I believe our best days are ahead of us and that we can grow as a city and protect our most vulnerable neighbors and create opportunities for all Salem residents to thrive. As councillor, I will fight for policies that will drive us forward. I came to the United States from Brazil when I was 12 years old. My family and I worked multiple service jobs to make ends meet. We often struggled with food and housing insecurity and moved often as rising rents pushed us from city to city. I overcame these challenges by working with my community as we lifted each other up. For over a decade, I have been a community organizer, policy professional, and public servant. I have successfully advocated for federal, state, and local policy changes, and I will bring dedicated constituent service skills to help Salem residents navigate city services. I can write ordinances and help people find solutions. From potholes to policy, I am ready to serve you on day one. My wife and I moved to Salem in 2018, becoming first-time homebuyers in the Point. Recently, we moved to South Salem to accommodate our growing family. Together, we are raising a daughter, building a family, and investing in our community. I have already turned my passion for public service into action and joined the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board immediately after moving to Salem. Today, I already serve you as the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and if elected, I will prioritize creating solutions to tackle our most pressing issues. I will fight to create more affordable housing and protect renters from displacement. Housing is a human right. Too many Salem residents are facing extreme rising rents, instability, and displacement. We must tackle our housing crisis with bold ideas and real solutions. We need to build more housing for people of all incomes and help people stay in their homes. We must update our restrictive zoning laws, incentivize multifamily and mixed-use developments, and remove barriers for production such as reduced parking minimums, streamlined permitting, and encourage denser affordable development. We are still catching up on decades of low housing production, and it's time to do more faster. I will prioritize investing in our infrastructure, sidewalks, roads, and aging sewer lines. We can grow as a city while investing in our infrastructure by making sure we connect developments to available funding to improve our city. We must make Salem accessible to all by ensuring that all people can safely and easily use our sidewalks, that bike paths are available, safe, and well-connected, and that pedestrians are safe crossing all our streets. I will champion strong environmental resiliency strategies. Climate change is real and an issue we must tackle locally. We must reduce our emissions, protect our waterfront, maintain our parks, and increase the number of trees throughout the city. And because we can't solve this problem alone, we must increase our efforts to work as a region to increase public transit options and make sure our state and federal leaders are fighting for us on the issue daily. I will work to support small businesses and make sure we are creating good local jobs. Salem's unemployment rate has finally lowered to pre-pandemic levels, and our storefront vacancy rate is at an all-time low. I believe in complete neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play. To do this, we must prioritize mixed-use growth that includes small business opportunities and work with our business leaders to plan for a sustainable and diverse business future. I will tackle our persistent traffic and parking challenges. This is an issue for tourist destinations and attractive cities like ours, both good things to be, by the way. But we must implement street calming strategies using a data-driven approach. Make sure Salem residents' parking rules allow all residents to conduct their business in the neighborhoods they live and work, and tackle congestion in a comprehensive manner. I believe it is time for Salem to complete a master traffic plan and create new, more efficient ways to manage traffic in parking citywide. And I will always do my part to help Salem become a more welcoming, more accessible, and more inclusive community for all. I believe that Salem is a great place to live, work, raise a family, and play. We are moving in the right direction today, but we also have a lot more work to do. I am ready to do it, and so I am asking for your vote on November 7. There are good candidates in this race, and I am the only one who brings the combination of lived experience overcoming poverty and housing instability, and over a decade of public policy and constituent service skills to tackle the issues we are facing today. You can learn more about the campaign and join our efforts at filippiforsalem.com. That's F-I-L-I-P-E for Salem.com. And I want to thank you for being an engaged voter and participating in our democracy. On Tuesday, November 7, when polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, I hope I can count on your vote to be your next city councillor-at-large.